All this meeting with the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we customarily do, we're going to take a moment of reflection. And I hope in your thoughts and prayers that you'll remember Roy Redd, who was a forty-some year member of the Fire Department, who passed away last week, week before. Interesting on Roy. He answered over 5,000 emergency calls since he lost his ability to speak eight or nine years ago. So, he never quit, never gave up. So, if we could take a moment of silence. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I am going to ask Councilwoman Rosa Sax if you can lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. We go into our public hearings, and we have five public hearings scheduled tonight. The first is condition use permit request by Rebecca Compton and Andrew Goodall for a major home occupation beauty parlor at 1525 Spruce Street Southeast, tax map number 529-17-10, in the R2 two-family residential district. Is there anyone here to address this? Did you just give your name?
I was Rebecca Compton. I just wanted to make sure I could ensure to have a clean, healthy environment to work with my clients. And I gave a handout of submissions. You should all have pictures in this case. Any questions for me?
Are you licensed now?
Yes.
And I take it parking will not be a problem. It's probably going to be one person at a time.
If it's one person and neither driver or guest, then that's what I would expect. We have a corner car driveway. And there's a picture in the guide.
Didn't hurt bit, did it? Any other questions?
This came through the Planning Commission a hundred percent.
There's a vote, and they did post six conditions, but you're aware of those. Parking was addressed, signage was addressed, so on and so forth. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close that public hearing. Ordinance to amend Chapter 42 zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code for the purpose of permitting and regulating home stay/short-term rentals as accessory uses to residential dwellings. Anyone here to address that situation? Andrew, is this your will that doesn't have anything prepared?
Well, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. This had gone through Planning Commission and was recommended for approval. Our Development Subcommittee spent quite a bit of time on it and decided that the best avenue would be to treat it as a home occupation. So, it would be similar to receiving a home occupation for a phone and desk operation that you would have out of your house. And that the limitation would be ninety days for a calendar year. And the other piece of this would be whether a companion ordinance would pass, which would change the Finance and Taxation Chapter to require lodging tax. And that would be something that you all would look at at the January meeting, on January 8th. Whether tonight was before the public hearing is a change to the zoning ordinance that would allow this use now as a home occupation.
There are other stipulations within that I think I saw in the ordinance as far as fire inspections, electrical inspections, the whole gambit that anyone else would have to go through for a home occupied business.
Yeah, it's a little bit more something that's not required as part of the standard home occupation. This is kind of what's been added for this specific use, that there is a safety inspection that requires that the building official and the fire marshal go in, ensure that the bedrooms have smoke detectors, and there's a fire extinguisher, that there's safe passage through the bedroom.
I believe I read also that they are not allowed to sell food as in a bed and breakfast type, but they can, as long as they have, without charge, food that is normally accessible in the house?
That's correct. So, the idea was, you know, if there's bottled water, or soda, or snacks that are in the home, that the guests that are staying can certainly have access to those. But it's not to be an enterprise where additional money is being charged for meals, or for drinks, or for other events.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Randy, you got anything on this? Anyone want to vote on this tonight, possibly?
If you'd like.
Okay. We'll get to that down the road. Ordinance repealing any town interests. So, I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing. We'll go to C, which is an ordinance repealing any town interests for an additional 1,050 square foot portion of an alleyway located between tax map number 497-8-45 and tax map number 497-8-48, and located at 596 Depot Street Northeast. Randy, who's got that on you, or Andrew, or?
Just to basically bring this up, it is what we believe is, seems to be a public alley behind the Cambria Emporium. Basically runs the length of Cambria Emporium back to Depot Street. It's, just, do we need a width to that?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet width. And actually, a portion of it is under the building.
And we?
We don't really see any need for it. You know, we've never maintained it.
We've, yeah. That's, I mean, that building was built while it was in Cambria in the early 1900s, I believe, and?
Correct.
So, I don't know how it filtered through all these years. Andrew?
And I'll just point out that, as you see in the exhibit, there is a small parcel on the left-hand side, and you see the purple portion, which is the alley that is being proposed to be dedicated, or to, that the town's interest is, that we would release any town interest in that alley. And then on the right-hand side is actually the Emporium Building itself. And a portion of that building, a small portion, a very small portion, does go into the alley. And that's why the advocate is here this evening, to ask that the town release its interest in that alley, so that it can be sold, and it would not complicate the sale of property.
Gavin, you don't have any issues with this, when you discussed this, and you're okay with the request?
Yes, and that it would simply be taking away the town interest, so that the properties on both sides that are owned currently under the same ownership. Both parcels on each side of the subject alleyway would be part of the, it would actually become one parcel.
Okay. So, this is, I mean, this has come up this evening, but that particular alley, when we vacated that, is it, so are we vacating that? Or if we vacate it, usually the parcel, you know, the land goes to adjacent property owners?
It does typically, well, or revert back to the parent parcel that it was dedicated from. That's what I think typically happens.
So, what do we propose, if we act on favorably on this?
We're simply vacating our interest in it, and we'll record an ordinance vacating our interest in it. When we do that, the county will assign ownership, basically based on their research. But the county is who makes that assignment. We don't make the assignment.
Wow. It's like a quick one, indeed.
How does the county get involved?
They're responsible for the county tax records, and if we're vacating an interest in a piece of property, and it's basically being given back to, like I say, the parent property, they would basically research and find out what property was dedicated from.
Well, my only concern with that, and I don't, my only concern is to make sure that if that alleyway's been used by more than one property owner, is to make sure that we're not impeding, you know, we're not, we're not doing this at the detriment of another property owner that currently has access. Is that the case?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm Doug Ashworth, owner of Electrical Supply. And that alleyway ensures we have two entrances. So, I'd just like to see a right-of-way remain, because this upper entrance is very steep, so it's hard in winter time, hard on the forklift.
Yes, sir.
So, the alleyway ensures that we can come in both ways right now.
So, could that otherwise be satisfied with a, whatever, apartment agreement?
If there is some vested right of private parties, that still wouldn't be affected by our vacation of it. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, but it becomes private property.
Yeah.
That's my only concern with that, is that we're, again, if we took action on this, and potentially to the detriment of someone else.
What if we simply vacated a portion of it?
Well, I'm just raising the question, and, you know.
And one avenue that could be explored would be dedicating private access to the particular property of the electric supply. So, it would not be a public access for anyone.
And that's fine as well.
It would be only for the owners of the electric supply to access for that particular property. And that may be something that representatives of the owners may want to address as well.
Who is the parent parcel, then? Who is the parent parcel? It's getting complicated.
My name is Joe Powers, and I'm here because I'm friends of the owners of the Cambria Emporium. Carol Lundstrom is an owner, and Shawna and Gibson Lusham will come down from the metro area, are the other owners of it. And we appreciate the work and the research the staff has done on resolving this issue, since it goes back to the turn of the century, as you said. And, of course, we're only interested in our portion of it that actually adjoins the Norfolk Southern Railroad. And as is pointed out here, although people do come in that way, it says not a public right-of-way. So.
Oh, so the request is just for the purple portion, then?
It's only for the purple portion.
And so, it wouldn't affect the alley?
The two parts of the two parts.
Oh, okay. That changes everything to me, then. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, they could, then, it would be private property, and they could actually close us off from that, from entering from that end.
Have you talked to the potential buyers about having a joint easement? I mean, I would assume they want access, if they give you access at the bottom, they want access at the top.
Right. They could potentially, they blocked out from their parking lot if Norfolk Southern blocked them on that side.
Right.
So, if we took favorable action on this with the condition that they provided you with the access that you're wanting, would that be acceptable to you?
Exactly.
And the answer to that is yes?
Yes.
And you'd give them access?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Sounds like a win-win, I mean.
So, we could take action on that conditioned on you all coming to terms with having access that you want?
Exactly.
Okay. What's the fuck are you?
The problem, the only problem I see there is, of course, the only legal way to come into this is from Depot Street, not from the railroad right-of-way. So, the only way to come in it is from the bottom there, to come in off of Depot Street. And, of course, electrical supply can access their portion of it from Depot Street. I think the purple property is what might potentially cut off in the future, unless the deal was worked out between the private people.
Right.
Yeah, we have to have the purple property open for our forklift, because there's material that can't be up and down on that hill.
What is the amount of property that stated that the Emporium may be imposing onto that right-of-way? Is it a foot, ten, two feet, three feet? What's the line? You know, they said part of it's under the building.
I believe it's about one foot.
One foot?
I think the issue is the purple part is needed by electrical supply. And if we vacate it, it could become private and be shut off to electrical supply. So, I mean, I would, that other part of the alley that's not shaded, that's behind electrical supply, right, and that's owned by you. I think, this is a public hearing, we still have two weeks, correct? I think both parties can meet and discuss having a joint easement, so they both have access to it. I mean, unless there's something planned by the Emporium to expand.
Well, we won't meet until January now.
Right.
Unless you want to come on Christmas.
That gives them time. I mean, that, it's not our place to jump in.
No, I don't, I think.
And dictate terms of private.
I would feel comfortable acting on it as long as we know that it's not adversely affecting.
Absolutely.
Any other, and the Ashworths with the, I don't know if this applies.
We have the potential, we have the owner and the potential owner in house tonight. Is there a problem?
You have a potential owner here?
That's a potential. It's not a problem to?
We do not have a potential owner here.
There's one.
Well, is the current owner here? Is the current owner here?
The buyer is not here.
The current owners are here.
We're the current owners. We're not the potential owners.
Okay. So.
Can you maybe go into a little bit more detail on the why it's so important to request this for closing of the property?
It's primarily, you know, we have two different tax parcels, the one in the front where the building is, and the one to the left, the purple. And it's a matter of connecting those and making it all one contiguous property. Carol says I'm wrong, so go right ahead.
Straighten this out, Carol.
Okay. Problem is, if you look at the plan on this, it shows that somehow or other, this alleyway miraculously slid up under the Emporium Building, and is now taking up this one foot, or one foot three inches, whatever it is, of the Emporium Building that shows on the plan. The buyer says, "I can't buy a building like that. It's sitting on somebody else's land." And I say, "But it's an undedicated easement. The town does not legally own it." I said, "I don't care. Make it go away, or there is no sale."
So, all hands is on about two feet worth of property in reality.
Yeah. Because the other side, the other side, we don't have any right-of-way on that anyway. That's all railroad right-of-way. From the railroad to the building, that's all railroad.
Still, that's 20 feet.
What are the chances of?
That could be closed off at any time by the railroad. And unless you did something solid on this, the building gets sold again, you're going to go through the same thing again. I realize that's a good way to make money, if people have to, you know, hire lawyers and all this kind of stuff, but it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense if you could just shorten the easement a little bit. That's what I was originally hoping, and that's what Megan had originally discussed with previous town manager, and that we thought had already been done.
Well, if we were to vacate just the elbow room, I call it elbow room, that you need to resolve that encroachment, that's really what it is, a legal term, I think.
So, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing?
No.
Okay.
I just want to be able to sell the building, and she wants to make sure, she said, "The town would have to do something to get it, so that it does not show that the town of Christiansburg has an easement that goes up on your building."
So, if it was an 18-foot easement, that would be okay, instead of a 20-foot easement?
It was a five-foot easement.
Right. So, I think what Carol's saying, she would just like you all to give up any interest you have in the two foot of the 20-foot easement that's next to the physical building itself, which we retain an 18-foot, whatever is there now, we continue.
And that would be acceptable to the electrical supply owners?
Yes.
Under.
I wish it presented better to start with, versus an all or nothing.
Do what?
It's not next to, it's under the building.
Right.
It's an encroachment. Yeah. Legally, I mean, not that it's purposeful, but it.
What do we have to do, just to do the?
Eastern two feet.
Two to five feet.
Eastern two feet.
What do we have to do, do the two to five feet?
Simply, you can vacate less than what was advertised, so that's not.
In both?
Yes, you could.
Just in both, so?
We would do three feet.
In January, we could vote, just to vacate.
You could vote tonight if you wanted to.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Because I would like to see.
Do you want to do more than two feet?
I probably would, just because, you know.
If you do five feet, then it still leaves 15. Is that satisfy you guys?
So, we're going to flip from three feet to five feet?
I'd give five.
Five. Is that, if you all, Carol and Joe, you're okay with that?
I'm not, I mean, it's out front of the building, not ahead.
If we zoom into the map, could you kind of give us an idea of where that line lays?
In relationship to the building, the way that the lines weigh are two-dimensional, and in the way that the aerial is taken, so it does, it's not an accurate representation of where exactly that is. It's not a survey grade, unfortunately. So, it gives us a good idea of it.
Okay, gotcha.
But it really, it's probably not the best idea to try to draw conclusions off of exactly where that is.
So, five feet.
So, five feet would be, I think, would provide enough cushion.
And it's acceptable to the Ashworths. Very good.
Carol, you're good?
And whoever buys the property, hopefully you guys can work out something private that we can permanently vacate in the future.
If they need to. This seems to solve everyone's, I mean, everyone's needs.
We're not vacating that whole thing, we're just vacating five feet.
Can we take action this evening?
Yeah, we can, yeah, I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else to address this part of it? Okay. So, we are in agreeance at five feet.
Yep.
That's what we're going to look at. I don't know how many square feet that is. Andrew, you can work that out. All right. We have a budget amendment for fiscal years 2018, 2019 budget. You have a copy of it here, and we have the very capable Ms. Tweedy to walk us through this thing.
Hopefully, this was complicated and a little easier. So, I'm just going to walk you through, we have kind of the Excel version of this in front of you. It's pretty condensed. So, I'm just going to kind of walk you through it. So, we finished last year, as you recall, we presented the audit last week with 3.74 million more than we anticipated when we prepared the budget document. Most of that is in things that we expected to spend out in last year's budget, but then did not spend out. So, we ended up with 3.747 million. Of that, 1.7 million was for projects in the 2017-18 budget that were not completed as anticipated. And then since the passage of the budget, there's been a few other projects, a couple of emergency repairs, and some land acquisitions that have come up, that we've included in this vice amendment. There is also two requests for two new full-time positions, one in engineering and one in the police department. And then, you got a draft of this back on 11/14, and there's been two changes since then. One was the addition of moving the overhead lines on the Fire Department property, and the other is just to reclassify a budget line item for a capital item. So, it's not an increase in the budget, it's just move it from an expense line item to a capital item.
Bow, I'm going to interrupt you there. The second-to-last item, the two full-time positions are already part-time, if I understand it.
Yeah, one is a part-time.
One is the Police Department, and the other is Engineering.
And that's a full-time position.
Okay. That's a new one, okay.
I'll uncover them a little bit more here.
Okay, sorry.
Go. That's not as big as I'd like it to be. So, this is just kind of the summary of the general fund changes. I'm going to have to look at my copy, because I can't do that part. Can you make that bigger? I'm teasing you. So, the first item is for the Building Department. This is the retaining wall that didn't finish on June 30th, that finished on, like, July 10th, so we had to roll those ones over. There's an additional 15,000 for pursuing that compliant properties for the Building Department. The 1.38 million is a rollover. That's for the intersection, stormwater pond, and sidewalks for the new marketplace development, 1.3 million. A couple rollover items for rescue camera system, more materials for the aquatic center parking lot, $220,000 for land acquisition, that's related to the railroad possibility coming here in Christiansburg. And then a couple small items for administration door security, some software for compliance with the Affordable Care Act, I want to call it something else. And then the engineering upgrade to their pictometry. The wage study numbers, we pulled out of here for now, until the council has a chance to review the wage study and decide how we're lining forward with that. The last item on here is the reclassification of an item from investigations in the Police Department budget to a capital item, and it's a whole thing for the vice budget. Budget for the full-time positions, the Police Department is requesting that their, they had administrative person that was part-time that did all of the vehicle maintenance, and he retired back in June. And Chief has been kind of mulling this one over for a while, and decided to make the request to make that a full-time sworn officer to do the vehicle maintenance and full resource officer. The annual cost of that position is $59,800. The increase for this budget amendment is $16,120, because it's the remaining portion of the year and net of the part-time wages that are already in his budget for that position. Chief said he would be here tonight to talk to, but he came down with food. So, we'd be better to stay home and not bring share. Engineering Department has the request for an additional full-time administrative person to assist with the phones and other administrative duties for engineering, planning, building, and inspections. The annual cost of that position is about $49,000. The increase for this amendment is $20,580 for the remainder of this budget period. That's the amount in the budget request. Special revenue funds, we have, basically, these are just new grants that have come up since the budget. One was a Department of Criminal Justice grant for $50,000. So, there's $50,000 in revenue and $50,000 in expenditure. Then the $108,000 was the movement of some capital projects in rescue that we actually did at the last meeting, but I put it in the amendment to formalize it. We also received in our planning grant for $35,000. Project costs of that are $70,000, so we'll support $35,000 of that from general funds. And then we also received $100,000 arts and culture donation, which they just go in as a revenue and expense, not that we're really planning on spending the $100,000 this year, but in order to not make it look like the money's going somewhere else, we just put it in the budget that way. So, that's special revenue fund changes. Capital projects, we have a number of projects that are rollovers, and a couple of items that were requested that be added. One was the Cambria Trail design, for 30% design, $70,000. Huckleberry Trail, Phase 2D, $50,000. We were originally going to ask to use part of the $1 million for the Truman-Milson Park for playground equipment. We did have some discussion about that at the last budget meeting. We decided to forego that at this time, until there's a decision on the PPEA and moving forward with the park. There's an additional $5,000 needed for the MPO traffic study. And then there's some rollovers for the Quinn-Stewart Signal Project, increased revenue of $13,700, and increased cost of $32,000. Those are both rollovers. And then Arbor Drive needs an additional $146,000 to complete. Depot Park Trail needs an additional $19,900. There's some additional engineering funds that are needed for the connector road. So, there's already $200,000 in the budget, so this would be an additional $200,000. And as you recall, we did have some of these funds in the reserve. And then the other addition is the Rowan Oak Street Fire Station, to move the overhead lines over ground, was $48,762. So, the total support for capital projects is $558,252. Water and wastewater, these are pretty much capital projects, a couple of emergency things. There was a home assembly that wasn't received, that's just a rollover, didn't come in until July, and it was in last year's budget, so we're rolling that over. There was an emergency boiler replacement for the digester of the wastewater treatment plant, that's $14,000. There was an emergency boiler replacement for the digester of the wastewater treatment plant, that's $14,000. There's an increased cost for the UV project of $70,000. Replacement of the Chapel and Stewart Water Line, $30,000. College Street I and I increased cost of construction, 49.4. And then they changed the upgrade at the pump station for Craig and Ed water a bit, so there's a savings of $159,185. So the total support for wastewater projects is $20,185. And then for the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, a couple of projects rolling over there. These are mostly all rollovers, increased revenues and costs that just didn't happen at the end of the year. North Franklin Street Drainage is $344,000 additional cost. Hans Meadow Drainage Project, that one's actually reducing the revenue and reducing the costs as that one's completed. Pellet Drainage Project has an increase of rollover in revenue of 464 and increased rollover of 627 in costs. Town Range Storm Stream Restoration, we're just reducing that by 81,000 as that's complete. And then the wire shed study for total support of stormwater projects of 408,000. So that, the rollover 3.7, all the uses outlined in this budget amendment make up $2,830,000. The budget amendment will be presented for approval at the January 8th with any changes that are recommended by council. So between now and then, if you have changes or want to have a work session, we'd be glad to do that. Finance committee, and then we'll present for approval in January since we don't have another meeting. That's it, any questions?
Val, where does that leave our unassigned reserves?
Oh, I'm sorry, I calculated that number. Word, which I, it's like thirty.
She actually, she had it for the finance committee meeting, so we were right in the middle.
Yeah. I want to say it's like 38 or 39 percent, so we're good. And this does leave, you know, roughly a million within that to play with, so we're good.
Can I ask you about the, uh, two quick things here? The $100,000 that was donated to us. Will there be a committee or will that have to come through us? Or how will that be distributed?
That's up to you guys.
We, I thought we formed a arts reserve fund for that. We did that a couple meetings ago.
Right, but I mean, I.
It gets put in there and it's solely per the two people or the two families that donated. It's only for arts and events.
Arts and crafts and theater.
But if somebody has an idea of what to do with it or something like that, they would?
It gets submitted to staff and goes to, I would assume, the central business district committee for discussion, but that's not for here.
Okay.
That's for its own, for, you know, support of the arts, period. That has nothing to do with this.
Watch Val cringe, that's kind of like her own little slush fund.
That's what I was looking for.
You don't like slush funds?
A couple meetings ago, we, finance committee presented it and council agreed to put that in its own reserve fund.
Right.
Okay.
And hopefully draw, use the interest off of it.
To promote events, promote arts within town, and of course.
Some bid comes along.
Again, it's not part of it.
Right.
And the second question I have is to Wayne concerning the administrative duties for this new person and handling phone lines. Is this basically going to be a secretary or, what are the duties this person going to be? Can you outline that a little more?
Yes, sir. This individual will, main responsibility is to answer the phone and read customers and route customer service issues throughout the town network as they need to be addressed. We have, I guess, to put it shortly, to put it short, we're busy in Longfield, Cat and Rocket Chair Factory down there. We really could use this administrative support. Our workload has grown exponentially and we're still stuck with our original model that we have down there. One secretary who basically supported three departments. We'll now have, if approved, an additional person to help spread that load out. And their main function is to answer the phone and to address customers.
Did you determine you're going to increase the job description of the young lady that's down there now into more of an administrative engineering type? There's a lot of background work she'll be doing more than, more than, more now than she could have done.
She has, she does a wonderful job. She actually has defined the position for us. As our operations have grown, she's grown with it. She's a very capable young lady. I'm looking forward to this potential for this opportunity.
I can ask you a question, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
When you say this person will handle the phones, is it the phones for engineering or the phones for the whole town in coming months?
That would be up to town manager, but restructuring phone tree, she would be capable of serving in that role. That would be, that would be her main function. And we start looking at space down there. We don't want to drag this out. We figured out a way with our office down there to have two people in there. One young individual, or older, as the case may be, at the counter itself, directly sitting there. We'll then go through a remodel. We don't have time for that, nor do we keep that under distraction. It may be a bigger project down the road, but we can make this work. Of course, if we did hire a new person, I'd want Devin there within earshot to train this, train this person. There's a lot to learn, there's a lot that goes on.
In this new position, even though it's going to fall under engineering, I believe, I was under, I was under the understanding that it was going to also support planning and building as well.
Correctly.
So it's just not for engineering. But, and I would not assume to whomever takes over that role will be a primary call center for the town. Because then she wouldn't be able to achieve any duties for planning, engineering. I would guarantee you that, so I'm sure she'll assist, or he will assist with the phones, but I don't think it'll be a primary. All the calls come to that one person, I would assume. Mm-hmm, engineering planning, she'll assist with those other two.
Since Wayne. Since we're in a public forum, I'll go ahead and ask the obvious question. Along with this comes a commitment that first, in early 2019, when citizens or anyone calls Town Hall, they're not going to answer to a robot. Is that right?
We can certainly do that. If you would like to get rid of that phone tree, that's fine.
Well, I strongly encourage we don't get rid of the phone tree. I mean, the key with the phone trees, get the caller where they need to go. What Randy has to do as a manager of the town and departments is make sure that people are available in their departments to answer that call. The phone tree is a tool that gets people where they need to go. If not, you're going to have to hire an operator that, or two, actually, that all they do is pick up the phone and transfer it over. The phone tree eliminates that, that cost, that personnel cost. So you'll still have the phone tree, you just need to make sure that when you press administration, somebody picks it up in administration. If somebody presses engineering, somebody picks it up in engineering. That's the key, Brad. You just can't get rid of that. If not, you need, we need to then set aside $100,000 in customer service department. You do. I mean, you can't, you can't just get rid of it, or else it'll just ring indefinitely.
I feel the phone tree works pretty well. Every time I call, I don't have that much trouble. And in many cases, I already know the extension, so I just answer them, I do the extension and go right on in and.
I think we've kind of got off track a little bit on this amendment.
Thanks. Any other comments on the budget amendment? Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Next is the 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. That is, will be known as CAPR, as required for Community Development Block Grant, CBD, CDBG, funding in the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD. So, Andrew, I see you're up. You got that mic up where we can hear you, is it good to sound?
So yes, this is one of two reports that we are required to submit to the Department of Housing and Urban Development on an annual basis. The first, we reviewed and council approved a few weeks back, maybe a month ago, and that was the annual plan, which talked about what we were going to do in the upcoming year. This report is what we've done the past year. So this was for 2017 and basically the main goal was accomplished, which was to complete the sidewalk from Hague Street to Depot along Park. So that has been done and that is what the report reads. And basically filled out the information that the Department of Housing and Urban Development asked us to fill out. So this is a report that we complete every year. I'd be happy to answer your further questions.
Questions from council from the audience? Thank you. Now, council, are there any of these items that we have looked at that you feel comfortable that we can move into discussion by mayor and council and take action on tonight?
I do. I feel very comfortable with C to work, to be able to sell the property and to help electricals.
There were no, going back to Ms. Compton's request for the major home, there were no comments against it at public hearing? Is that correct? It's an ADO vote by public hearing?
Yeah.
I'm fine with any answer.
Yeah, I think we can do that one for sure.
And then the regulatory home state, we're just, we're going to be making, are we going to approve or can we approve the ordinance tonight that was presented in the package?
I'd rather wait.
Okay, that's fine.
It's a good deal and I'd like to give citizens and businesses and anyone a chance to contact us in the next two weeks.
Okay. So if I hear a motion, or do I hear a motion, do we move public hearing A and C to discussion by mayor and town council?
Do you amend your amendment or your motion?
I do. I will amend it to A and C to move it to consent agenda.
One second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussions? Hearing done, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Skyes?
Aye.
That is 6A, thank you. Under our consent agenda, we have the council minutes of November the 13th and November the 27th, 2018, contract with states line for a mobile stage for the Parks and Recreation Department with the amount of $162,555.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to stop there for a second. I was hoping that Casey would be here tonight. And I asked him, I said, to me, it seemed like $162,000 for a stage is a lot of money.
I think, well, this is part of the consent agenda, so once we get it on the table.
We approve this? I don't remember we approved that.
Well, we need to get it on the.
Let's get it on the table, we'll talk about it. Let me complete what we got here.
Okay.
All right. Contract for Renoke Street and Arbor Drive Design Build Sidewalks. We did schedule a public hearing on February the 12th, 2019 for a conditional use permit request by Shaw Development LLC for a residential development to construct, to consist of multiple family dwellings at a density of development not to exceed 20 dwelling units per acre on approximately 5.7 acre property located 2,000 Sunset Drive Northeast, tax map number 436A-22A and 436A-42 in the B3 General Business District. Public hearing for February the 12th for conditional use permit request by Michael Abraham, agent for the Threshold Center LLC for a private recreational facility, Jim, in parentheses, at 225 Industrial Drive Northeast, tax map numbers 500A-5K and 5K1 in the I2 General District, General Industrial District.
Make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda? Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion, Mr. Pepper?
Well, I mean, I was just, I don't recall us talking about this, this stage. I mean, I easily could have missed it, right? I just, it just really.
It was actually in the budget.
It was in the budget?
Yeah. And this is Parks and Rec, this isn't Casey.
Oh, okay, okay, that's.
I think I mentioned, this was actually in a prior consent agenda, but we had an error in the typo in the amount. We had in there $142,000.
Okay, so, yeah. Good job.
It is, we had it at 142, it's actually 160.
Yes, correct. It's 20 grand.
20 grand, okay. So you get, we get that. Any other comments, questions, Madam Clerk?
Sir, ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Do we need to clarify what we're voting on as far as C, that it's five feet?
I've got it marked, I'll get it, I'll get it in.
This is a consent agenda, we're going to have a later discussion.
Oh, it's on public hearing.
I thought we were adding those two, that's why I asked.
We're adding it, yeah, but I've got.
Discussing an action, please.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Skyes?
Aye.
That is 6A, thank you very much. Introductions and presentations, we have Public Relations Director Melissa Demettre present on the Public Relations Department.
Thank you. I'm going to let Andrew pull it up. Okay, good evening. I will try to keep this brief because we're doing pretty good so far. If you don't know who we are, and I know that you all know who we are, we are the Health Department of the Town, we're a two-person team that is comprised of myself, the Public Relations Director, and Erika Miller, the Public Relations Specialist, who is manning with camera. We are very dedicated to these six ideals that I've listed here, and that is to be effective in our communications, timely, proactive, transparent, consistent, and approachable. So the ways in which we do that, probably the first thing that most people think of when they think of public relations is the media relations component of this. The ways in which we communicate with media are varied, through specific press releases, through more informal pitches, reaching out to people and letting them know we think it's something they may be interested in. And then once we kind of make that communication, there's a few steps we take from there. And that's internal briefings, if we're going to ask a spokesperson to go on camera or to speak to a newspaper reporter. Sometimes we'll talk with them first, make sure they know what information they should have prepared. This is a lovely image of Jim Lancenees being interviewed on Curbside Recycling, I think that was, earlier this year. And then the interview stage, oftentimes, that's us putting the actual expert forward. So we like to put the person who knows the most about the topic, so in the curbside recycling case, that's Jim. But if there are times in which that person's unavailable, or it's something that we feel comfortable talking about, I'll take on that role as the PIO, the Public Information Officer. And then as you guys definitely know, because I blow up your inbox all the time, coverage recaps, so kind of rehashing coverage that we've got on the town and other relevant coverage in our region, so that you and the department heads and anyone else who, maybe someone who's interested in that topic, is informed about it. And the media is a great way in which we can communicate our message and our information to the public, which is our ultimate goal. But we can also go directly to the public, and there's a few ways in which we do that. The town website, which I'll discuss a little bit later in the presentation, because we just went through a redesign this year. And then social media has really blown up, everybody's on some sort of platform it seems. And so we manage in public relations eight accounts and support six others. Through the website, we use. Through the website, we use something called Notify Me, I'm sure most of you have probably signed up for or have seen, and that is an alert system, when we publish news and announcements, when we publish public meetings on the calendar function, when bids go up for RFPs or RFP opportunities are published, and people can sign up to get emails, text messages, of that information directly in their inbox when something's altered on the website. But for more emergency situations, we use something called Citizens Alert, and that's through a company called Everbridge. We use that with Montgomery County and Blacksburg, all three jurisdictions are members of Citizens Alert, and that's really more for something that people need to know right away. One way that we do utilize it in the town a lot is for water main breaks. When Jim's staff lets us know that there's a water main break in a certain area, if water's going to be out for several hours, that tool allows us to actually draw on a map and let people in that area who are affected know, your water's out because it's a water main break, we expect it to be three hours, et cetera. But it's also for major, like, crime alerts, if there's someone who's wanted, or, you know, we need to let people know to evacuate an area. Weather-related alerts, that's the National Weather Service, so it's automated, it doesn't come from us, but that's a major reason people use Citizens Alert. And then, the newsletter is one of our actual print products that goes out to about 9,500 residents every other month, and that goes out in your utility bill, and we use that for town news, upcoming events, anything we really need to communicate to people. And then, letters to residents, this is something where we support other departments a lot, so if, say, Public Works has a planned project that will create a water outage, they'll often draft the first draft of the letter that we'll look over, or we'll help them draft it. Same with engineering, a lot of times with their capital projects, we'll go in and draft a letter to let people know when the project's starting, it's going to affect their street, if they want future updates, here's a form to sign out, and we'll contact you via email for future updates. Oh, and brief note, I wanted to mention, with Citizens Alert, we have 64,939 residents sign up for Citizens Alert, so obviously, that's more people than live in the town of Christiansburg, but it comes to the whole county, like I said, and we wouldn't send out alerts unless it was a major emergency to Montgomery County and Blacksburg, but we work really well with those jurisdictions, so if there's something that needs to go out to all 64,000 people, we would communicate that and work together to put that message More on what we do briefly, informational materials, a really big part of our job, and it's something where Anika's been very strong, she's really good at graphic design, and this helps me a lot, because I am not as good at graphic design. So, things like the welcome guide brochures that the residents get when they turn on their utilities, Downing Finance, we design that, keep it up to date. The town map, we usually worked with graphic design students to help us with that, but we kind of keep the information up to date, start that process when it needs to be printed, make sure it's available in town facilities, and Val's husband has been so kind to deliver it to hotels in the region, especially before major aquatic events, so people know our restaurant, lodging, attractions, things like that. The budget summary, citizen center report, and water quality report are all items that Anika has really spearheaded. All reports that we had in some form before, but maybe were just 100 pages of black print on white pages, where people don't want to look at all of our budget numbers, and we want them to get visually appealing, so people actually pick it up and learn what's in our budget, you know, what happened with our audit, what do these numbers mean, what's our water quality like. So, our goal is to kind of condense things, make them readable, and make them attractive, so that they grab people's attention. And then, obviously, event and program flyers, we do a ton of those, either we create them or we edit other departments. Event support has been a growing portion of our department, through marketing and promoting events, obviously with the farmers market, when we were in between managers, Anika and I handled the farmers market, so when we onboarded Casey, that was a big part of, we were still very involved there, and we're still very involved on the farmers market, social media, promoting it. And the Montgomery Christiansburg Citizens Academy is a wonderful event, we do every other year right now, but potentially talking about moving it to a yearly event with Montgomery County. We have a great partnership with them, and it's an eight-week course where people learn all about the workings of the government, and we always have a really good time meeting those residents and learning from them, too. We just finished that up in October. And I serve as the FOIA officer for the town, so any Freedom of Information Act requests that come into the town, come to me. We get several months of that, depending on the time of year, what's going on, that can be a really major part of our department's role, and along with FOIA, public meeting notices, and obviously, filming meetings and posting them online and getting them to Channel 198. And last slide on this is internal communications and events, this is something that's a little bit less time-consuming in our role, but something we do help support. The Intranet, something we created back in 2016, maybe 2017, and it's a resource for town employees, gives them a lot of information on policies, what kind of a one-stop shop for things they can find that they need. For birthdays, we do, you know, town play birthdays, so you know when someone in your apartment has a birthday, little things like that, announcements. And the Town Picnic is a yearly event that Public Relations puts on to kind of thank all of our employees for all of their hard work. And branding and editorial support, that's kind of just an ongoing thing, about to talk about the website, and that redesign kind of launched a new branding initiative with us. We kind of used it as our Kickstarter for everything else that we are reinventing with our letterhead, and you guys have seen, working on business cards, this PowerPoint template is something that we've provided for people to use to make it easier when they're trying to put together PowerPoints. And then, wayfinding signage, which I'll touch on again in a second, obviously is a big branding initiative, creating a sense of place, and I think I mentioned before, just a lot of other departments, we help review, copy edit, items like that. So, briefly back to media relations, our office directly supported 266 TV news segments or newspaper articles this year, so since January 1st, and that means, you know, there's hundreds of other news pieces where Christiansburg is mentioned, or the region is mentioned, where we didn't have anything to do with it or didn't talk to a reporter, but those 266 pieces means we either pitched it, we organized it, we answered questions, or we got an interview for the reporter. Social media, the accounts we manage include the town page, the police department page, and the farmers market page on Facebook, so that means, by manage, I mean, Anika and I are the sole posters, content creators, people who answer questions on those pages. Same for those three for Twitter, and then, we have a town Instagram page and a town LinkedIn page that we manage. And we also support several other accounts. We're not always the primary person posting, there are people within these departments that handle it, but we help create content for them or answer questions, especially after hours on the weekends, when they're not monitoring as much, and that's Rescue Fire Aquatic Center and the newly created Skate Park Facebook page, and same for the Aquatic Center on Twitter and Instagram. So, social media numbers, these numbers are actually since May of 2016, shortly after I started, so we now have more than 7,500 people who follow our Facebook page, and that's about 4,000 more people since May of 2016, an increase of 118 percent, so it's something we're really working hard on. We found that in Christiansburg, it seems that more residents are on Facebook than Twitter, and that always varies jurisdiction to jurisdiction, and Blacksburg, for example, have a lot of college students, they have more Twitter users. We know we have people out there that don't follow us on Twitter, and we're always trying to grow our Twitter page, you can see that it's increased about 89 percent, but social media is really important to us, and we are always trying to create ways to get people to follow us, so that we can then later tell them important things when we really need to tell them important things. Our town Instagram page was started in May of 2016, so didn't exist before, but the first time I presented to you, it had about 200 or 300 followers, and we've increased that to 1,081 followers. And then, this year, we created a LinkedIn page, so we only have 51 followers, it's very, very new, but the reason we did that was to support HR and recruitment efforts, another way to post jobs for free without having to pay for advertising, and also, to a lesser extent, it's kind of cool for our employees who are already on LinkedIn, they can now say, you know, they work for the town page and it links there. So, social media is a really important way to get out information, as I've mentioned, but it also is a way that we can be kind of fun and show our personality, so this is an example of that. And by far, the post has reached the most people. On April 12th, we said that we had a narcotics detecting bunny that we had gotten through a grant from the Christiansburg Police Department, and though I don't think it meets the official definition of going viral, I like to say it was viral, because it reached far more than half a million people, so a lot of people saw that, some news coverage came out of it, almost 30,000 people either shared it, commented on it, or liked it, so it's just a fun way to show our personality, you know, there's real people behind the badge, and we like to do that a lot on the PD page and also on the town page, but really show off that, you know, we're not always serious 100 percent of the time. Our website redesign, as I mentioned, kicked off our rebranding, it was a year-long process. We worked with Civic Plus, that's our website provider, and the results are that we have a more visual, more user-friendly, and more mobile-friendly site, and that was really important to us. We felt before that we couldn't really show pictures and video, and now we feel we can do that a lot better, we're still learning a lot of the functionality of the site, but for example, when you click on, when you go to the site now, there's those rotating banners, that gives us a lot of opportunity to display photos and posters kind of like this. And another big part of it was, our analytics had shown for a long time that a lot of people, majority of people were coming to our site to find information about our recreation offerings, so we really wanted to make recreation a larger part of the site, and to do that, we created a subsite for our Parks and Rec page, so now they have their kind of own mini website. When you click on Parks and Rec, you go to a carbon copy of our site, but everything's, all the menus have changed to be park specific, so we think that's done really well. This year, since January 1st, we've had 195,915 visits to the website, and that's more than 480,000 page views, so a lot of pages have been viewed, and what I included down below, it's kind of hard to see, a really, really important reason why we did the website relaunch is that we're showing that mobile devices, smartphones, tablets, are quickly approaching desktop numbers. So, that is important to us, because we felt our previous site was not very mobile-friendly, and now we're really seeing that, you know, more, not most people, will soon be visiting our site from a phone or tablet. And lastly, looking forward, probably our biggest project coming into 2019 is wayfinding, which I know I presented out separately before, but we feel that it will make a bit of an impact in the town, branding-wise, creating that sense of place, really welcoming people to our town. The RFP is currently out, and bids are due December 19th, so we should have more information to come out to come, and I will definitely be here presenting about it in the future. Any questions?
More of a comment, I think you guys do an amazing job, and I just want to say thank you for that.
We appreciate it. Anika's awesome, if I didn't mention enough, I don't think I could ever mention it enough, so she's a major part of the team.
And, you know, your weekly announcements there about what different radio stations, TV stations, newspapers have, their comments and all that, I feel like I keep fairly good on it, but then I always look it over there and I learn something new, and I really, to me, I really appreciate that.
Good, I'm glad to see you're helpful.
I'd like to make one comment, since Ms. Lindstrom is in the audience, having come on council 12 years ago now, the difference between where we were 12 years ago and where we are today with transparency, not only do we have literal glass doors on Town Hall, we have figurative glass doors on Town Hall, and it's largely due to citizens like Ms. Lindstrom holding us accountable, and also, what you all have done to, there is no smoky backrooms in Town Hall, we're on video, there's no smoky rooms in Town Hall, and everything that we do is open to the public, and you all do an outstanding job of washing those figurative glass doors, so thank you for that.
I have two former newspaper reporters working in the Public Relations Department, so.
Well, I think just the amount of things that you all cover, as far as getting the word out to, you know, we had a website that somebody created about 10 years ago, and they created it, but it was, nothing ever happened to it, it was kind of a one-page thing that was there if you knew about it, and now, you can't, you can't move anywhere without seeing something, any of us that are on the social media or those type announcements, so it's been, it's quite encompassing, and it's what we needed to do all along. So, for me, and I'm sure for council, thank both of you for jobs well done.
Thank you.
And I've given Anika a little assignment, so if she'll take over the camera while she bails me out of trouble, I'd be good.
Okay, I will do that.
Had the letter that we were going to sign for Mr. Carter, I forgot, I forgot to bring it, so I couldn't find it on my desk, so there we go. All right, citizens' comments, this is for citizens who have the opportunity to come for council, to address issues or concerns, or anything, whatever, is there anyone here that would like to address council? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll close the citizens' comments. Committee reports, Mr. Collins and Mr. Stipes, Street Committee report recommendation on platform records showing new public and private easements on tax map number 436-51, I'm sorry, -5-1, and 436-5-C, C1. This is a marketplace redevelopment, phase one.
Okay, we have two plaits we're looking at this evening, they were on our last agenda, and they weren't quite ready for primetime, but they are tonight, and both easement plaits are related, they're both related to the redevelopment of the marketplace that we're all very excited about. The first plaque that you see here is the sidewalk plaque, and what the development does is achieves what our ordinance requires, which is sidewalks providing connectivity, and although that looks sort of strange where the sidewalk, where that shaded sidewalk is going, it is consistent with the site plan, and it does provide the connectivity from left to right or from south to north through the parcel. On the left side of the parcel, which is, the left side is going to connect to our Arbor Drive sidewalk, so when this is built, and our Arbor Drive sidewalk project, design build project is complete, you will be able to literally walk from this development, this new development, sort of where Arby's is, or Burger King and so forth, and this new development, you'll be able to walk to the left, up to Hardee's, and turn right, and go all the way back down to Outback Steakhouse, sort of, it'll go all the way around, just sort of FYI, but this is consistent with the developer's site plan for the redevelopment marketplace, and it's also consistent with the design build project for the sidewalks that's going to continue the party, I guess, or continue the sidewalk all the way around in front of Hampton Inn and Micro Hotel and the post office and so forth. So, that's that, if there's no questions about that sidewalk, we'll move to part B of the easements, we're going to handle these together as a bundle. Part B is utility easements, which aren't very exciting, but they're necessary, and what that is, is basically resulting from the development plans for the parcel, the developer needs to move some water sewer lines, and a lot of those are going along the south side, you can move your hand along that end, or sort of show where the water line, sewer lines are going now, and now they're going to be redirected into that, if we approve the plaque, they'll just be redirected into that easement, and again, Mr. Nelson has been a part of this, and this is consistent with the plans for development, but it requires council action for both of these plaits, and we'll entertain any questions, but I'll go ahead and make a recommendation on behalf of the Street Committee to approve both parcels as presented, and I'll make that recommendation in the form of a motion.
Yeah, I second it.
Now, any questions? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
That's it, thank you very much. Discussion and action by mayor and council, first is the 2017 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is CAPR, as required for Community Development Block Grant, CB, CDBG, funding for the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. Any more action on this as needed, or is, were you going, did you want to review?
Otherwise, if you're, we're being positioned to take action this evening, it's something that we can then move on to, and get back to the US Department. that we could then move on to and get back to the U.S. Department of Housing. We are in the middle of the citizen comment period, so there is additional two weeks of citizen comment. If we do receive any and then we pass those comments on, this will, council action is needed for us to give the process for Mr. Bishop.
Okay, tonight. Tonight.
If the council's in a position to decide this?
I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second, everybody?
Second.
Motion and second on approval of the CAPER, at all abbreviations that follow. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you very much. The next on the agenda was item A from the public hearing. Conditional use permit request by Rebecca Compton and Andrew Goodall for a major home occupancy beauty corridor at 1525 Square Street, Southeast, tax map number 529-17-10, in the R2, two-family residential district. And we're planning to wish you did approve it, 8O with six items of consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit request by Rebecca Compton and Andrew Goodall.
Second.
Motion and second.
With the conditions, yes.
With the conditions. Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
The next item will see ordinance repealing any town interest in approximately, we have here 1,050, but we're going to reduce that to...
Approximately 788.
788. Square foot portion of an alleyway located between tax map number 497A-45, tax map number 497A-48, located at 596 Depot Street. And that equated out to five feet, right?
Make a motion to take favorable action on the request and vacate our interest in the, I guess, the easternmost five feet of that parcel as we discuss.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion?
I would like to thank all the interested parties for being here this evening so we could do this. And we're all interested in seeing Cambria reach, you know, to reach its potential again. And, yeah, so I appreciate the fact that we could resolve this here, sort of family discussion on this, in here in Town Hall.
Thank you for your support. Madam Clerk?
And it appears that everybody is pleased, which is a nice thing, too.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Scholter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Let's get back to reading your papers. And that is six oh, thank you very much. Staff reports. Town manager, I believe that document comes around today.
Passing around two copies, one's card stock, if you'd like to sign that one.
That's the one I was... What we're passing around is, and you all can go ahead and sign it, this is the letter to Ann Carter, thanking her for her many years of service on the Airport Commission.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Randy?
Just want to thank you for mentioning the passing of Roy Redd. He's, of course, a longtime town employee and decades of service on Rescue and Fire Department, meant a lot to the town, and that would be greatly missed. And just to point out that the Christmas parade is this Friday, the Christmas, the market's four to eight, and Christmas parade, seven o'clock, with the free lighting at 6:45.
What if?
We got, we'll up the...
We're actually having a meeting on that tomorrow, and what if?
Mr. Williams?
No reports.
Very good. Any other staff here to report?
Just a reminder, since we don't have a meeting next week, all the normally CDK bills will be first meeting in January. So they will all be made. So just a reminder that that's how we handle it in December, and we don't have that second call. More often than not.
Very good. Council reports. Anybody want to go first, and then I'll move from there?
I do have a question, and some, this question for Randy. We, in central business, we were talking about the ride, and that was to come before council, and since we don't have another meeting, is that something that we need to discuss or bring in?
Yes, we can. If you'd like to add it for your discussion, we've mentioned the possibility of doing basically a ride program on New Years and also St. Patrick's Day were the two days that have been discussed. A ride program, if we could work something out through Hoopde Ride, basically a safe ride home on those two days.
Do you need official action from that, or just a...
I think just general consensus from council would be fine, if you're willing to sponsor those, if we can work out some type of agreement.
How much are we looking at?
Between $300 and $600. We do have potential sponsorship for it, so it may end up costing us nothing, but I think it's very minimal compared to what we get back.
I think if it'll make the road safer for that much, I'm, well, I appreciate Marissa for bringing this up quite a few months ago.
Other than the special vote, we just give kind of the thumbs up.
Okay.
We're good, like, you know.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay.
Well, since this is our last meeting of the year, I just wanted to say that I think that 2018 has been successful in, for no other reason than that the marketplace looks like it is pretty much online and looks like that we have something going. And in 2019, you know, we should really see some of the work that many people have put in to make this a success. Hopefully in 2019, we'll have more to talk about on Truman Wilson, and by this time next year, we'll be feeling very good about that. That's all.
Mr. Stipes?
Nothing to report, regret about not being able to attend the parade. I hope everyone can make that. We've had a death in the family, I'll be in Williamsburg on Friday. So it's always a big deal in the marketplace, or the Christmas market and all that. So if it's rescheduled, then I'll be there, or I hope to be there, but I'm, I'm gonna be there on Friday, so.
Don't hear about that, Mayor.
Henry?
Nice. Would like to wish staff and citizens happy holidays. You guys, this calendar year, you guys did a great job in spotlighting the town and buddying up with us, so it's appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have it, Doc.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. These two gentlemen sitting back in the back are very important to us and the town. I appreciate y'all being here. I think it's very important here for the town to know what goes on here, and y'all getting the word out is great, and I appreciate that.
Welcome back in. We assume you're talking about Melissa and Anika, right?
Yeah. So basically, we got four reporters. We got four reporters in gym, is that what you're saying?
And you ladies are great, you know. You folks are awesome. All y'all are awesome. Anyway, it's an exciting time for Christiansburg, too, because the marketplace has closed, the deal was closed, it's a fact, now it's going to happen, and it's a good time to be in Christiansburg. And I wish everybody a great Christmas.
I'd like to echo everyone's comments about wishing staff and citizens a very Merry Christmas. You know, least we forget, we had a couple other openings this year in Aldi, Hobby Lobby, and Dollar Tree, and that place, that little corner over there has exploded. So it's really, it's really interesting and it's really exciting to see this. Couple of things, we're going to meet tomorrow. Casey and Brad have called a meeting about the weather forecast for Friday. It doesn't look really promising at two inches of rain, so we're going to decide tomorrow if we're going to the alternate date, which is Monday, the 17th. So we just shifted a day or two. So we'll, I'm sure that Anika and Melissa will keep everybody well informed on what we're going to do with that one. Council, we hope that you'll be able to walk the parade if it's Monday. I know, I'd like, it's nice to have a full council and family members, grandkids that you may want to have walk with you.
Dogs.
You can bring yours. Old Ralph, we talked to, he's not very sociable at this time in his life. The other thing is a very, is something that came up and was done in about three days. Someone had said, why doesn't Christiansburg have a walking tour of some of the old homes? Well, Casey jumped on it and we have a walking tour up on East Main Street, starting around 6 o'clock on the 21st. And they're going to go through, there are four or five houses on the, that they're going to tour through, the Oaks, the old Mensch House, which is now a bed and breakfast, the old Porterfield House on Montague and Junkin, and the Wines. Are they part of that deal? There's four houses.
Yeah, there's four.
There's four. We'll start out here. Price is $15 a person, and the proceeds go to the museum. So it would be interesting.
Where does that start, Mayor? Does it need to be at Town Hall?
We're going to assume simple here at Town Hall, and plus, the whole walking tour's not more than, I doubt if it's a total mile, hardly. So I think it's really going to be interesting, and if you're like my wife, she wants to look in every old house in town, so I'm going to get four, I'm going to get four of them off the bucket this fall. So, and one of the houses is Diane Akers and Heather Browning, who are, work for the town of Blacksburg, who just moved here and did some major renovations, and they're really excited to have the group in. So it'll be an interesting time. I think that's got it.
One thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have discussed this back here about the connector road and how we're going to come up, you know, with what it's supposed to be named. When are we going to do anything on that?
Well, I think we've got to get the funding approved first, and right now, I don't believe it's in the plan, is...
Yeah, but I mean, it's for the drawings and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, for the biopants?
Get the thought for the connector road, yeah.
North Franklin 114 Connector. We're putting a stoplight on it. Is there any being worked on that?
It's going to be, it'll be construction here in a couple of months.
Right, but wasn't the name already, some program already started for that? No.
We discussed it, but nothing has ever done. Yeah. Okay, just a thought. I'm sorry I mentioned it.
No, that's all. Did I see that there was something on the funding for that connector road that...
Just that...
We've got an application in, and we're going to meet with Ray Smoot, Commonwealth Transportation Board rep, just to try to kind of push our projects to him.
But if the name has to be there, we need to jump on.
If, if we need a signage for, basically, there's going to be a signal on North Franklin Street that will tie in beside of, I guess it's really Patrick's Way right now, that connects through to Oak Tree Boulevard. Because Patrick's Way is just that small connection from North Franklin to Oak Tree Boulevard. So it's essentially being that vacant lot area. Would it have to be named? Not necessarily if you wanted to call Oak Tree Boulevard, but I think at some point you would want kind of more of a signature name for the connector road.
I think Harry wanted to get the public involved in naming it, which I think is a great idea.
Maybe getting high school students involved.
Now, we tried that, Ray, they didn't do anything, so we're not going there. Nothing.
I would say we turn it over to our PR department.
Yeah, yeah.
And let them come up with the program. And then just advise us about it, but that was a great idea, Harry, to get the public involved in that.
Thank you.
Harry, do we still need to meet next week or this week on that project?
We probably should, yeah. If you don't mind.
I'll have my thing, call your people.
Okay, yeah.
They want to be career-based. Good luck on that. Is there any other business to come for the town? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Good to see you all tonight.